Good evening and welcome.
To the May twentieth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, both in person and by remote connection, and I'll give you a few points on that in a few moments. Also, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, can you notify the Chair? I'll give you a few seconds in case you're connected remotely. I don't see any hands raised, so we'll go ahead. So regarding the hybrid format pursuant to Governor Healy's March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three signing of the Acts of twenty twenty three extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL thirty A twenty until March thirty first, twenty twenty five. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number one five zero eight nine four five four four one zero, and the conference ID number is three zero seven zero seven eight three zero three pound. That's three zero seven zero seven eight three zero three pound. You may also join the meeting in the link on the post on the agenda that's posted on the town website using Microsoft Teams. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, which was formerly Channel eighteen, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. As I mentioned, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So before we begin, let's do a roll call of the board members. Art Spru.
Art Spru, present.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
Bob Wurzhafter.
Bob Wurzhafter, present.
Charlene Greenhodge.
Charlene Greenhodge, present.
Frank Scherer.
Frank Scherer, present.
Bob Dubis.
Bob Dubis, here.
This is Catherine Halpern, also present. Is there anyone on the board who needs to recuse themselves from any matters on the agenda tonight?
I just wanted to mention that on the ninety-seven Samurai Road, the the transfer station, the applicant engineer is Weston and Sampson. My daughter works for Weston and Sampson. She did not work on this project, so I'm not sure that there's any issue with my participation.
Yeah, I don't think so, Katie, you're in agreement, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, but thank you for the disclosure, we do appreciate that. All right, so let's move on with our first agenda item that are is the minutes from April twenty second. You did receive a second draft from our Secretary Annie, which includes the second page. Any corrections, additions to the minutes? I have there being none, could I have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the April twenty second, twenty twenty four meeting minutes.
And may I have a second to that motion?
I will second it, Frank.
Thank you. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approved.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approved.
Bob Wurzhafter.
Bob Wurzhafter, approved.
Charlene, Charlene Greenhodge.
Charlene Greenhodge, approve.
Frank Scherer.
Frank Scherer, approved.
Bob Dubis.
Bob Dubis, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I also approve, thank you. So the next item on our agenda is a site plan review for three oh nine Orleans Road. This is a site plan amendment. Do we have someone to present on this project? Could you kindly introduce yourself? This is a change of use. Thank you.
Hello, I'm David Elbridge, one of the co-owners of Elwood's Raw Bars.
And I'm Tanya Khalil, also co-owner of Elwood's Raw Bars.
Please, did you want to present, or shall I can just put pull out some highlights from the staff report?
We're pretty much here to have our seating amended from twenty seats to thirty-three seats inside, inside only. I do know that on our application, we listed two picnic tables. We would like to remove those picnic tables from the count.
Okay, so was it just two picnic tables outside? And then there was also a mention of a standing area? Let's see, yes, six whiskey barrels, two four-person picnic tables are taken out. And what about the standing patrons outside? Is that still included?
That's still included.
Okay, all right, great. So it's just an expansion of seating inside to thirty-three seats. I'm just gonna quickly with the board look at our staff report. The one issue, where is it about parking? I think it doesn't change the parking requirements. And this again is a parking lot, that's a large parking lot that services several establishes establishments in that one building. Is that correct?
Yes, our operating hours are three o'clock to eight o'clock, maybe eight thirty. So during that time, the Chatham Park, which is right next to us, they close at two thirty.
They close at three, yeah.
And Chatham Works, they're much busier during the morning times and day, and it tends to drop off at night. So not much traffic there. And then the liquor store to our other side, you know, less activity than during the day, so.
Okay, great. So then just a quick review of referral responses. No comment from Department of Public Works, no filing is required with zoning board of appeals, police department and fire department, no comment received. Health Department, I will review that because that that is changed by the fact that you're removing the picnic tables, but the Health Department says the approved total seating capacity for the business is thirty-three seats. This is with the understanding that the septic system in use is only for the raw bar and will not at any time be connected to the coffee shop should their system fail. In addition, the outdoor area is conditioned to take out only single-use paper and plastic products only. So these standing areas that you have outside, does do those meet this requirement that the Health Department stipulates?
Yes, and we actually have our inspection tomorrow morning at ten o'clock. So part of the reason we're here, when we first came before you last fall, at that time, we hadn't determined with the Board of Health, with the septic regulations, and that's why we had put twenty seats at the time, and then found out it was could be in fact thirty-three.
Okay.
So that's how the seating changed.
Okay, good. HBDC, a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed patio area was issued on April seventeenth, twenty twenty four. The property is outside of Airport Commission jurisdiction, also outside of Conservation Commission jurisdiction, and Select Board approved the liquor license, which included both indoor and outdoor seating. So with that being reviewed, I'm gonna ask the board if you have comments or questions. Art?
Just clarification, when I was out there and I looked at it, I think it was Friday last week, I noticed the area that you're showing on your sketch in here where you have the picnic tables, which you're no longer putting, but you had the five whiskey barrels. That was all excavated out. It was, it looked like you were gonna put some hardscape surface in there and some something else, I wasn't quite sure. Is the, how has that changed now based on the removal of the picnic tables?
It's it's actually, it's not changing, there's seashells being spread, and then we will have pavers, so it's handicap accessible. That will be, I think we're going five, four feet.
Four feet wide.
That will go in.
So there'll be seashells on other side of the pavers.
And then there's a four-foot-high white picket vinyl fence that's gonna go around the border of that.
Well, the only reason I'm bringing that up is the the site is severely under for their green space area, and, you know, some of the least in the other side where the perk is, there's some green space that was put in there. Is there something that you could look at and explore as part of this? I mean, I'm not worried about conditioning it or anything, but I think it would add something to this because we're just removing, 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 and now we have more hardscape area or Indian and built area, and the condition for green spaces getting reduced.
So when we were laying out the fence, because the fence has to angle at two sections, and there's an area of about maybe four or five square feet that we are gonna do some plantings.
Okay.
And we could also consider maybe hanging some hanging plants off the fence.
Anything would be a help and improvement.
Sure.
I'd just like to green it up as much as you can.
Sure.
Excuse me, Arthur. The green space for that project is out back. They have probably almost three-quarters of an acre of green space out back.
Yeah.
I know, I know what you're saying in the front, it's a little tough.
Right, the front, the front is tough, you're right. When I was looking at the plan that east, southeast, and in here, they they show that the requirement is sixty percent for green space, and they're about twenty percent under that, so the requirement is twenty-five thousand square feet of green space and and provided is only eleven thousand, so they're they're way short. So I'm not expecting this project to do much to mitigate that. All I'm saying is, is any kind of plantings would be helpful and beneficial, so it's, I'm not gonna put any criteria on it, but it's just something that I would like to help improve the area a little bit, similar to the way the perk is, that's all.
Yep.
Other than that, I don't have any comments.
Okay, great, and you're all right, Arthur, with not including that as a condition, but as a request of the applicant?
I would say so, I mean, it's it's, there's not a lot of space in there, and I'll take the applicant's word for it that they're gonna try and do something with it.
We also do have two, they're like these bins, four feet high, three feet high, that that we're filling with flowers too, that will be right there.
Large planters, that's what I was thinking might be the best idea, right?
We have that too.
Rather than hanging.
Good.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Good. Warren, questions, comments?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Bob Wurzhafter, Charlene.
I have no problem with what you're doing, the only problem is on the site plan provided, you can't tell where this is going to be.
That's true, I had a little issue.
You know, I was trying to fit the little sketch plan that you provided, and I appreciate that, but it 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 doesn't fit in with, no, that's a walkway.
No, that's, still, that's where it's connected.
To the right of the walkway.
Yeah.
Match it up with the picture.
Yeah, it's it's not entirely clear.
Really?
Like I said, I don't have a concern with it at all.
Yes, show us with the pointer, that'd be great.
The site plan that you have up there where it's listed as shells, a few years ago, that area was shells and I believe rosebushes.
You can walk up there.
Which were.
Show us the the shape where it is.
In front of you.
So.
There, yes.
So here's, so here's the walkway going in.
Oh, wait, they can't, they can't hear you because of the microphone.
So maybe if you could point, and then if you could narrate, yes, on the mic.
Okay, so, yeah, the walkway.
Okay.
So the, what he's pointing at now will be the four-foot fence going around, where it's listed as shells, those shells are no longer there, the rosebushes are also no longer there. When the Netflix series came in to do their their series last summer, they ripped up what was there, and then grass was put down. The grass was not working due to pets using it as their playground, so the grass was taken out, and that's when it was determined that we would put the seashells back in. So that area where it says shells, which is somewhat of a triangle, where the shells are will become a paved walkway, and then seashells will be on either side.
Thank you, I have absolutely no problem.
Okay, great, Frank?
No questions.
Thank you, Bob Dubis?
No questions.
All right, so I think what I want to propose, I want to ask for, if there's no further questions, no question from the public, can we have a motion to approve the amended site plan with our three standard conditions, as included on the staff report?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the amended site plan with conditions for the proposal to extend the restaurant use to thirty-three indoor seats based on the fact that the applicant meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the protective zoning bylaw with the conditions as our standard conditions.
Our three standard conditions, good, and may I have a second to that motion?
Frank Scherer will second.
Thank you. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wurzhafter.
Bob Wurzhafter, approve.
Charlene Greenhodge.
Charlene Greenhodge, approve.
Frank Scherer.
Frank Scherer, approve.
Bob Dubis.
Bob Dubis, approve.
This is Catherine Halpern, I also approve, thank you so much for coming before us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is ninety-seven Sam Rider Road. This is a Town of Chatham product, project, I'm sorry. Rob Failey, our DPW Director, is overseeing it, and the engineers are Weston and Sampson, and I believe we have representatives of Weston and Sampson here tonight to present the project. Would you like to begin with your presentation, and please introduce yourselves?
Sure, my name is Nick Ames, I'm a civil engineer at Weston and Sampson, plus I have Rob Failey.
Yeah, Rob Failey, Director of Public Works, thank you.
Thank you both for being here.
Thank you for having us, and I appreciate the remote participation option. I'll share my screen right now, provide an overview of the project. All right, so that's showing up for everybody. So Weston and Sampson is working with the Town of Chatham Department of Public Works on some improvements to the transfer station, which is located at ninety-seven Samurai Road. It's an approximately eighty-acre parcel of town-owned land. It includes the transfer station, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, as well as the closed landfill, and then it also includes the wastewater treatment facility. So transfer station employees currently use an approximately three hundred and fifty square-foot area inside of the tipping building. And just to recap, there are three buildings on the transfer station property right now. There's a tipping building right in the middle where waste is dropped and managed. There's a small twelve-hundred-square-foot garage building, which is currently used for storage. Now on the north side of the site, there is a maintenance building, which is also used for storage. So right now, transfer station employees use this three hundred and fifty-square-foot area inside the tipping building as a break area and office area. It's severely undersized for use as both, and due to the proximity to the waste handling floor, there's persistent odor issues in the break area. Additionally, the employee restroom is also partially blocked by utility pipes, and there's just overall insufficient storage space at the transfer station. So to remedy these issues, the town is proposing to demolish the twelve-hundred-square-foot garage building and replace with a larger three thousand five hundred square-foot garage building in roughly the same location. The garage building will have approximately two thousand square feet of garage space to provide storage area for transfer station equipment and vehicles. It'll also have about fifteen hundred square feet of administrative space, which will include brand-new staff facilities, it'll have an employee kitchen, a break room, restrooms, and storage closets, and the building will also include a mezzanine on the second floor for additional storage of miscellaneous transfer station equipment or DPW equipment. The existing garage building, checking, go back to the existing conditions plan, located right here, it has an existing one-thousand-gallon diesel storage tank, it's an above-ground tank located directly adjacent to the building. This is just used for fueling of transfer station equipment, so prior to demoing the building, this tank will be removed, and it's gonna be replaced with a brand-new double-wall steel above-ground fuel tank, which will have, you know, leak alarms, everything, and, you know, that's required under Mass Fire Code. And then the tank will be located on the north side of the site. Going back to our proposed conditions plan, this is gonna be located up here, and to improve upon existing conditions, it's gonna be offset from the existing maintenance building by a minimum of twenty-five feet, as opposed to the existing tank, which is right next to the existing garage. So in addition to the new building, we're gonna be including about five thousand square feet of pavement replacement. Some existing paved areas and compacted gravel driveways will be removed and replaced with lowman seed on the west side of the building. And then it also includes new utilities to the building, water, sewer, electrical, and gas. The sewer facilities for the new building is gonna be a septic leaching field. Under existing conditions, the employee restrooms are routed to a septic chamber and a leaching chamber as well. It seems to be a bit undersized compared to current mass plumbing code, so this new system's gonna be designed in accordance with today's standards. Connection to the existing municipal sewer system, upgrading is cost prohibitive to the project, so we have submitted a septic permit to the Chatham Board of Health. And the existing parking facilities at the transfer station are gonna be reused, there's paved parking right across the way, and ultimately, we're not increasing overall parking demand. This new building is gonna be used by existing transfer station staff, and that's pretty much it. So that's an overview of the project, we have a lot more detail in our planning board application. I can feel any questions that the board may have.
All right, why don't we start with Art?
This this might be something for, I'm not sure the engineer or Bob Farley. You know, when we saw the plan at the annual town meeting, it's, it was a much more comprehensive plan than what is shown here. Obviously, some of the funds were not approved for subsequent phases, but it would be helpful if there was a comprehensive plan, even if it's preliminary and could change, for us to have on file to reference, so we could understand how this all ties in, not just with this particular project, but perhaps to subsequent phases. Obviously, though, any runoff that comes from here is gonna go into that subsequent phase, so it would be good to understand the grand scheme about what the project will all entail. It has really no effect on on my comment here, but I I think it would be helpful of our, because I don't believe our board has ever seen any kind of plan in a preliminary form or any other way, as as far as what what the whole scope of the project is from a site perspective.
So, yeah, the the site was evolving, the building was kind of always the the footprint, where it is now, where it's proposed now, it has, the size has increased slightly, but the recycling area and the whole, the rest of the layout has been in flux, and primarily because of the bid prices that we received last summer. So so it is in kind of a stage where it's it's not ready to be shared, just because there's, there are too many things that are changing even as we speak.
Okay, all right, so as as far as this particular plan is concerned, I noted that you have a P encasedment on a water main and trench dams, quite a few of them. Is there some contamination that you're concerned with in this particular area while you're using these type of materials and products? I don't see anything wrong with them, I'm just asking that from an understanding question about what's, what what have you found underground that called you to want to use that materials?
Sure, fortunately, we haven't found any contamination at the site. There is the closed Chatham landfill directly adjacent to the building, so we permitted this project through Mass DP Solid Waste, who regulates both the transfer station and the landfill, so part of what they look at and regulate and protect against is landfill gas migration, which primarily, I mean, the main hazardous component with landfill gas is methane. So with methane, it can travel through utility corridors that are backfilled with gravel, it can act as a preferential pathway. So to protect against that, we're proposing to put in trench dams. In addition, all of the plumbing inside of the building is gonna be designed in accordance with Mass Plumbing Code, which protects against sewer gas migration back up through sewer pipes, so includes, you know, P traps and everything. Additionally, I should note there is a soil gas well right next to the existing garage building. We haven't seen an exceedance, a reportable exceedance of methane in that well ever, I don't believe. The last time that methane was detected was well over ten years ago. So we we aren't seeing evidence of methane migration from the landfill, but in addition to be extra careful, and this is one thing Mass DP Solid Waste wanted to see, we are including a sub-slab gas management system, it's kind of like a radon system you'd have underneath your house. So it's perforated PVC pipe that goes below the the concrete slab, above the PVC pipe and below the slab is a impermeable vapor barrier, and then that piping is routed to an active blower system on the roof, so if there is any methane that accumulates underneath the building, it'll be managed by that system.
Okay, thank you, I I I think this is all good design, I was just curious. Okay, thank you. I think this is all good design. I was just curious on, this is my understanding why you would use these materials, and thank you for that. You note in your letter that there has been a conditional approval received from Mass DEP on this, dated March 1, 2024. Is that something that you can submit to us so that we understand what the DEP's approval and what proposed site that was related to? So when we actually see a site plan, we can make sure that our, you know, review and issues complement that and don't contradict anything that they have to say?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can submit that to you.
Thank you. When we get to the building now, this building, I believe, is a little bit closer to the roadway than the previous one. And there's a canopy that sticks out in front. That's four foot that sticks out, and it's about a little bit more than eight feet above the ground. There's pavement that goes all the way up to this. We have vehicles that are going by. The existing roadway was 20 feet wide. This is more like 27 feet, because you're paving all the way up to the face of the building. It almost leaves it open for any kind of large truck vehicle, fire equipment. You even show a route where it gets real close to there. The bollards are close to the building. They're not sticking out in front of where the canopy is to protect it. So I think there needs to be some protection done there or something that would limit vehicles' ability to come too close to that canopy and sort of snag it and rip it off. It's a cautionary thing. I mean, you have bollards there anyway. I just think you need to have them situated a little bit better than what you have shown.
Sure.
Let's see. You know, from a stormwater perspective, I note that you have 11 downspouts and splash blocks out there. Everything runs off into the pavement and then it runs down. Is there any reason why you can't consider putting in dry wells to capture some of this? So it's not placing stormwater runoff on the pavement surface, which, you know, could be traveling with vehicles or somebody walking there? The reason why I bring this up, I'm not quite sure if that's a metal roof and if you have some pre-treatment requirements that you have to do with that metal roof. But it just doesn't make sense to me that you have 11 downspouts for this building with everything on splash blocks, whether without any, some attempt to try to infiltrate it. Is that something you could consider?
I mean, ultimately, all runoff from this area is going to be infiltrated, everything. I mean, a portion of this runoff is going to run off by a sheet flow over to the existing recycling area into the catch basin system. Ultimately, everything ends up in the infiltration basin on the south side of the site. Regarding the roof, I believe Mass DEP in the stormwater handbook, they see roofs as clean runoff. So I don't think there's any type of treatment requirement for roofs. Part of this design, up through this area here, this is all compacted gravel under existing conditions. And in addition to replacing the building, there is a paved driveway as well. Now, this compacted gravel surfaces, the runoff curve number is very similar to pavement. It's only slightly less. So the intent of this design was to almost offset the increased runoff that we're going to be generating by the new building. So as proposed, any minor increases from this area? I mean, we did a stormwater design of basically the whole site to capture all runoff that's going to that basin to accurately model the total amount of runoff that's going to be accumulating. We're not seeing any increases in that basin, either in the peak flow or in the ponded elevation in the ponds. So that's the intent of the design.
I think the ones in the rear are fine. I think you're right, that could hit with a splash block or whatever you want. But the ones that are in the front, you have five of them, four or five of them in the front that go directly to pavement. It would be helpful if you could just put those into dry wells rather than continuous runoff, because you know how roofs are, they continue to drip and drip and drip long after everything else happens. Just, this is a suggestion. Now, when you did your stormwater, you're saying that's going to be the all captured in the recycling area. I assume that's a subsequent phase that will be seen later on and probably that's where you're going to do most of your stormwater management? Because you say you're going to infiltrate it and retain it. I mean, the DEP requires, you know, 40% TSS removal and oil-water separation, especially if you're going to have an infiltration basin, not a detention basin, but you have an infiltration basin. You're looking at a sediment for bay in your basin to capture anything that you can't get by catch basin collection removal or manhole removal. So is that something that you should think about for that subsequent phase? It's not something that affects this project. Again, I'm looking at this from a larger picture perspective, because I don't know what you're doing elsewhere. I'm assuming that this, from this site, is going to be captured in a proper way, but it means everything downstream has got to be set up and meets the DEP requirements. Those are the only comments or questions I have on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, as part of the, oh, sorry, go on, Captain.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, as part of, as much as I can say about the next phase, the design for that phase does include deep sum catch basins, which do provide a level of treatment prior to discharge to the basin. But I should note, this basin in the south side of the site is drastically oversized for current flows. This isn't a typical small basin you might see at a gas station or something like that. This basin is enormous and, you know, based on conversations with transfer station staff, there typically isn't any significant ponding within that basin. So I just wanted to flag that.
Thank you. Warren, comments or questions?
The only comment I have is that, again, I really would have appreciated having at least a pro forma of the total site plan. This isn't my power alley anyway, so I'm not going to over-question things. But without seeing the entire site plan, it's difficult to comment about the kinds of things that might be of interest to me. But again, that comment's already been made, so I don't have any other questions now. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Bob Wurzhefter?
Yeah, this is outside as well, but as a municipal building, there is a bylaw that requires that the building get a net zero bid and to compare to any other potential bids. I'm just wondering why there's no solar on this roof, for one. So if you would like, you can come before my other committee, the Energy Climate Action Committee, and we can discuss it at that time.
Yeah, good point. You're welcome to reply if you'd like, but not obliged.
Yeah, I would need to discuss further with our design team.
Great, thank you. I'm just going to ask a question based on the comments that have come up so far, because there seems to be some concern about the limited site plan that we're looking, or the restricted area site plan that we're looking at and what you're working on without the whole, the entire site plan, the entire project plan's design being completed. So obviously, you need to feel confident from your side that whatever shape the rest of it takes, that what's being proposed here will work. So without the knowledge of the whole, it's difficult to feel completely confident approving the part. But you, as the designers, absolutely need to have that confidence. So could you comment on that point?
Yeah, so we, last summer and fall of 2023, we were doing the design of both phases one and two concurrently. Phase one being the redevelopment of the overall recycling area and phase two being this garage building. So this design for the garage building and the associated site work, including the septic, paving, utilities, et cetera, was all done at the same time as the phase one. So they do jive. This, the phase one, I mean, right now, we're looking at this site plan application as an independent project, because as Rob mentioned, the phase one is still in flux, just based on the available funds the town has. But if you were to look at the phase one design that went out to bid this past fall, this phase two design we're looking at here fits right in. The new pavement, the, you know, particularly, when you look at the phase one design, I don't want to get too much into it, because as Rob said, it is in flux based on where we can save money in certain places. But a lot of this paving through the existing recycling area is going to stay. And there are utility poles, zoom in, there are a few utility poles right here. So this is really where we're looking to interconnect the paving regardless. The phase one limit of work ended up here around the building. So there's really no phase one work in this part of the site to begin with. They really intersected as part of the, you know, water utility work. And then where the pavement ties in here. So all this to say, we are confident that this design we're looking at here is not going to cause issues with the future phase one redevelopment of the recycling area.
Okay, good, thank you. Charlene, I think we're with you.
I have no comments.
Alright, and Frank?
My only comment is that this is a project that we need to do. It's very valuable for the employees, but no other comments.
Okay, thank you. And Bob Dubus?
Can I ask you to show me where the drainage is going to eventually go for that, in front of that building or on the side of the building for all the water?
So you can see the grading. Everything sort of sheet flows down towards the existing recycling area. There's a network of catch basins. There's two in the recycling area here, as well as a catch basin down here. There's a grade change between this grayed out retaining wall and where this catch basin is. So it catches everything that comes from the existing pad where the compactors are and everything that kind of sheets off of the landfill as well. We're going to get some infiltration up here, but for the most part, drainage from the site gets into the system and then is discharged. It's kind of hard to see. It's sort of off the page here, but you can see how the grading is. It's a large infiltration basin that sort of looks like this, and it's approximately 20 feet.
So you really don't think that another catch basin a little closer to that building to catch the water there would help and then pipe it into the existing?
I mean, based on the grading.
Well, the grading makes it go down the asphalt.
Yep.
So I think it would be a little better if you did stick a basin in some way to catch some of it and then outlay it underground. The other thing, is there a sidewalk around this building?
No.
No.
No, so the pavement goes right up to the building?
Correct.
So all those drains come down and go right onto the pavement. So when they walk out that front door, they're going to be walking on ice in the wintertime. And when the snow melts on the roof, it'll be coming down in one, two, three, four, five, six places in the front. And unfortunately, we have a bylaw that all commercial buildings and all buildings residential, this doesn't qualify, but all have their downspouts go into a leach field or a leach basin or a rain garden. So I'm sure with all that space, you could probably get a rain garden out of it. But I'm not, I can't approve this building with seeing the drainage come out onto the road where people are driving around with garbage and a lot of little old ladies in the wintertime coming by and a lot of old men like me going around it. So I am not going to put my approval on this until you fix the, which is a mandatory thing for our board to do in any other building. And since there's a lot of public people in this area that are going to use this, I think it's a hazard.
Noted.
Okay.
Kind of discussion for me. Thank you.
Right, so do we want to add that as a condition, Bob?
I would, yes, I would like to.
Okay, so for Annie's benefit and Art's benefit, could you formulate the condition? Bob and Art, I'll ask Bob and Art.
Yeah, I think there should be something done about it. Like Art says, the back doesn't bother us. But the side where there's going to be driving in garage on the, let's call it the west side, okay? And in front of the building where everybody drives in front of that building and in the snow and ice, the water will wash the salted sand away. And I think it's a hazard, especially for people walking in and out of there, the workers. I can't approve it when our bylaw says you will deal with it.
Okay, so you want to say on the west?
And I think we can afford it in this town without a lawsuit.
I think the building that we're looking at right there in that picture, I think that's the east face and the south face have downspouts that go right directly onto the pavement.
Alright.
And so those are the two faces that.
See the single garage door?
Give it a try?
Yes, please, Charlene.
Those two faces are the ones that are.
Are critical.
Yeah, those are discharging right out into the pavement.
Okay, so Charlene's going to give us a statement.
So I simply said additional drainage shall be installed to limit the runoff on the pavement.
On the pavement? So we're not even going to specify the east and the south? Is that?
No, any that go on the pavement, I think, should be taken care of.
Runoff on the pavement, that's why I just left it on the pavement.
Okay.
Because the east side is going to come around, it's going to come around and down in front of the building.
Right.
Okay, so that's condition number four. Annie, do you?
I actually had, this was my condition number five.
Alright.
Based on what Arthur said regarding a copy of Mass DEP's letter.
Alright, yes.
I added that as four.
Okay.
And then the drainage would be five.
Okay, just want to make sure. So Annie, do you have those two conditions? Yes, and Arthur?
Just one other question that I had on the relocation of the 1,000 gallon fuel tank. I think it's going toward the north end of the site. I assume that some dispensing pumps are associated with that relocation. Is that true?
Yes. Yeah, it's a whole turnkey system, so it has the tank and the dispenser attached to it already.
Okay, well, my understanding is, is just like you see at every gas station, that there needs to be a concrete pavement underneath this. Asphalt pavement is not allowed. So there has to be a concrete pavement in that dispensing area. There was no details of that on your site plan, so I just want to flag that and make sure that that is included as part of your design.
Yeah, yeah, the fuel tank will be on a concrete pad.
But so does the dispensing area too. That has to be in concrete too, not asphalt.
The, you're talking about where a piece of equipment would sit?
Right, if you pull a vehicle up and you take, just like you do in a gas station, and you got a hose and you connect it into your fuel pump and you click it on, that whole area there where you're dispensing, then your vehicle has to be concrete too. Take a look at it. They don't allow asphalt pavement.
Okay.
Arthur, that's a state law.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, great. So we don't need to condition that because it's a state law?
That's fine with me.
Would you like to condition it? Yeah, it's a state law. Okay, great. Any other comments from the board? We've added two conditions, so we have a total of five conditions. Mr. Dubus, yes?
Just would like him to know, all the lighting is downcast, am I correct?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
All the outside lighting is downcast.
I would have to confirm with our architectural team. I would assume so. You mean, pointed down towards the pavement?
Yes.
Correct.
And that's one of our standard conditions.
Yeah, I believe our standard lighting detail is all point, downcast, yeah. I can confirm with our architectural team. I can confirm with our architectural team.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, great. Any other points, especially points that we feel we need to add as a condition? Art, yes?
I'd just like to clarify the language on point one, where they refer to referencing the Weston-Samson Plan dated April 15th, 2024, represents improved design and layout on the subject property. Um, I want, I want to make sure that we, that since the applicant was very specific that this is a limited site, I think that we should reference that as the general building and its immediate, um, site improvements around it. Let's condition this to just this limited area and not the whole site. Um, I, I don't want to have subsequent boards taking a look at this and saying that we signed off on the site and that's not what we're doing here. We're signing off on a 3,500 square foot building and a few thousand square feet of pavement around it and that's about it. So could we clarify that too?
Yeah, I, I, that's fine. Um, so you want to add that to the wording of, of our standard condition number one?
Just, uh, either replace subject property to, for general building and, and immediate site improvements around or write a separate sentence, either or.
And, and the, and the moving of the oil tank.
And, and the movement of the oil tank, right.
For general building and surrounding site and...
And the immediate...
And immediate surrounding, surrounding site and movement of the oil tank.
Right.
So that would be, uh, a phrase attached to condition number one after dated April 15th, 2024, represent the approved design and layout for general building and immediate surrounding site and movement of the oil tank, relocation of the oil tank, rather than subject property, which tends to mean the entire property. Is that acceptable to you also, Nick? Okay.
Yes.
All right, great. And then we have our two standard conditions, next, condition two and three. Three is about all exterior lighting. Condition four is regarding, uh, a letter, a copy of the letter, um, from Mass DEP dated March 1st, 2024. And condition five is about the additional drainage. Um, and can we restate that?
For the, for the downspouts, yeah.
For the downspouts.
That discharge the pavement area.
Yeah, great. Is that satisfactory to the board? Any other points we need to include? All right, and Annie, you're clear on, great. All right, so with all that being said, if there's no other comments or requests from the board or any questions or comments from the public, I don't see any hands raised, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve with the five conditions as stated, um, for the proposal to demolish the existing storage garage and construct a new storage garage with administrative staff space based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the protective zoning bylaw with the five conditions as stated.
I would normally say so moved, however, however, um, I, if, if the board is happy with this, the conditions, I totally agree with. My motion would be to approve the amended site plan with conditions for the proposed, for the proposal to demolish the existing storage, woo, building and construct a new storage garage and administrative staff space and to relocate the existing diesel tank to the north end of the site based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for the approval pursuant to protective bylaw with the five conditions as outlined by the chair.
Great, thank you. And do you make that motion?
I did make that motion.
Okay, great.
Art Spru, second.
All right, great. Art Spru?
Uh, Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Worchafter?
Bob Worchafter, approve.
Charlene Greenholt?
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
Frank Scherer?
Frank Scherer, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
And this is Catherine Hopp and I also approve. Thank you very much, Rob and Nick, for joining us tonight and thank you for going ahead with this project.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, everyone.
Great, thank you. Um, next item on our agenda is 456 Main Street. Uh, this is a site plan amendment and are you Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Okay, could you kindly introduce yourself and describe to us what you're requesting? Change of use for Buffy's.
Thanks to the, um, board for having me today. Um, thanks to the Community Development Department for, uh, all their help along the way. Um, so, um, I purchased Buffy's ice cream in the spring of 2022. Um, it became pretty clear pretty quickly that the existing refrigeration, both the refrigerator, um, walk-in refrigerator and freezer on the inside of Buffy's, um, was inadequate to support, uh, the business. I'm going to assume that the, um, uh, notes that I sent along were, were reviewed, I'm sure. Um, so I'll summarize the project. Uh, in summary, there are four objectives. We, um, will build a storage platform to be placed at grade, um, on top of cement blocks along the rear of the structure. This has already been completed. Um, the platform further extends non-conformity on the east lot line, um, due to the irregular shape of the lot, um, and the requirement to help facilitate incoming and outgoing deliveries. Um, the final size of the platform, uh, as presented, um, results in a new non-conformity along the rear lot line. The second objective is to install on top of that platform, um, an external 11 by 14 refrigeration unit. Um, so, uh, this takes the refrigeration that's on the inside, we're moving it to the outside on top of the new storage platform, um, new units. They will have, uh, compressors that utilize the footprint of the existing compressors, uh, so those won't, uh, be, um, uh, any new space there. Uh, they'll run more quietly, more environmentally friendly, grid friendly, et cetera. Uh, objective three is to install, um, some fencing, uh, along the western side of the new storage platform, um, that will provide some screening from, uh, existing picnic table seating, um, and make that look nice, do some plantings there as well. Um, and then the fourth objective, uh, is to install some downward facing lighting to ensure proper nighttime, uh, illumination and to improve safety both for, um, staff and customers, uh, in that area. Um, and that's the summary, uh, of the project, um, as I think, uh, you guys have in the notes, um, this has gone before the HBDC and, uh, the Zoning Board of Appeals already. And I look forward to hearing any comments from this board.
Okay, great, and just, let's take a look. Um, so the one issue, and I understand it, a lot of this work is already done, it's already completed?
So, um, yes, the storage platform has already been, um, built. Um, I, uh, had some advice from, uh, prior council that, um, this could be considered a patio. Um, and, uh, the, the town, uh, did not see it that way. So this was built, um, I take full responsibility for, uh, for that part of the project, putting the cart before the horse a bit.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, so yes, the platform is already constructed.
Okay, let's take a look at the referral responses. DPW, no, no comment yet. Uh, and you did go before Zoning Board of Appeals on March 28th and you were granted a special permit and dimensional variances. No comment from police or fire department. Health department wrote with no concerns regarding the installation of the elevated pad and walk-in freezer as proposed. HGBC issued a certificate of appropriateness on July 19th, 2023, and the property is outside the jurisdiction of Airport Commission and Conservation Commission. Um, the one point that is, uh, comes up is the parking situation. The use requires a total, as you'll see in your staff reports, a total of eight spaces and currently there are zero spaces, but it's been that way for a long time. So I just, as with many properties downtown, somehow or other this works out, can you explain to the board how this has been working out where eight spaces are required and zero are provided for all the years that that has been the case?
Sure. Um, so I believe that the last, the last review of the site plan was in, um, 2000, 2001. Um, and at that time, there was, um, an extension of the existing building. Um, so ever since then, um, it's been operating the same way. Uh, there may have been a time when, um, the prior owner cleared some space along the proposed court at the rear of Buffy's, um, that runs, uh, um, between us and the, um, uh, the dormitory that's run by CBI. Um, and there are some, uh, non, I don't know what the right term is, uh, there's, there's parking back there that's used, um, but they're not official, um, spaces there, it's, it's, um, uh, it's on the right of way. So, um, and that's been the same way for, uh, for some time, ever since, um, long before I bought Buffy's in 2022. Um, and, you know, yes, there's, and this particular proposal makes no changes to any of that. So this is reviewing, basically reviewing, um, and getting, you know, um, you guys are taking the opportunity to review the current state or the, the existing state since, um, the early 2000s.
Yeah, and what the board needs to consider is do we want at this time, which should have been done before, but at this time, do we want to grant a waiver for the eight parking spaces? Um, so with that being said, I'm going to just go to board, comments and questions. Art, do you want to start?
Okay, um, if I recall, we had an application for the larger building just to the west of this. This was a few years ago and we ran into a similar questions and concerns on this. Obviously, these buildings in this locale have been in this state for a long period of time. The, the parking situation was sort of, if it wasn't addressed as part of the original application, it should have been. So I'm, I have no problem with, uh, using the same, um, way we approached that project with this one and, uh, to go ahead with a waiver. Um, I've, I gotta get credit for this property though, I mean, he's got a deck in the back there, but he's got a beautiful catch basin right in the middle of the property, so I'm all set.
It makes civil engineers happy. That's good. Um, Warren, comments, questions?
Um, yes, I've been down there and I think what they're proposing makes imminent sense. With respect to the, uh, the parking, however, uh, the plan that we've been given does show a gravel parking area, um, that it looks to be on the property, um, and therefore, um, it may have an easement on it for others in the, um, in the private way there to use it, not sure. But, um, compared to many of the buildings on Main Street, the parking in, in behind here is, uh, is huge. Um, and is, uh, little known too. I don't know many people know that you can go in there and park if you're lucky. Um, but because that parking area is there, um, I, I have no problem at all with having a waiver for the spaces are not marked and so, but it's four to five cars anyway that can be there. So that's all, thank you.
Okay, great. Um, Bob Worchafter?
Uh, yeah, just a couple, just a cou, just a couple real quick questions. Um, the refrigerator is going to be outside or the freezer's going to, the...
Um, it's a, it's an 11 by 14 unit. It has both a walk-in refrigerator and freezer.
And how are you going to keep kids from walking into it in the middle of the...
Um, there will be a fence. Um, the fence will run, um, from, uh, adjacent to the building into the back. Um, so, uh, the, the, the way that the, the public uses the property, um, obviously they come in and they, uh, get delicious, um, you know, Chatham's only, um, you know, homemade ice cream, they, and then they go eat outside on the picnic tables. But the other use is to go from Main Street through the property, um, through the arbor archway that we have back there to the unnamed way and sometimes, um, to the public restroom that is in, uh, the park, Gould Park. Um, so they're walking through. The only way you could get in, um, to the area, uh, where the freezer will be is if you go out and you come around, um, and loop back onto the platform. There will be a lock, the, the, there will be a lock on the freezers, um, you know, during hours when we're not open. Um, and then in order to get into the, um, freezer when we are open, they would have to come almost into the, almost into the property itself. So, um, as with, you know, situations, um, in, in all over town and in every town, um, there is going to be trouble that, uh, one can get into, uh, if you really try. Um, but, you know, the, I think the, the primary way that we keep people away from that is, is by having that six-foot fence that runs alongside of it.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about the, uh, accidental entry as opposed to the malicious entry. That's your problem is somebody gets in there to steal it, but I don't want a little kid walking in there.
Oh, um, yeah, and accidental entry, could you be more specific about kind of the concern? Give me a scenario.
Well, I, I just, the fence is, sounds right, uh, and that you, you know, you're not going to have some kid whose mom is not paying attention wander off with the ice cream and walk into a freezer.
Yeah.
And get stuck in there.
Right.
You can't get stuck in there.
Okay.
Well, you can't, but you, yeah, yeah.
Um, I mean, there's a dumpster back there that they could also fall into, we're going to try and prevent that as well. But no, I think, um, I, you know, I hope, I hope that the, the difficulty in kind of going around, um, prevents that. And, you know, the, the handles are, um, if you're strong enough and tall enough to open it, you would be strong enough and tall enough and hopefully smart enough to get out of it by pushing the...
Yeah, okay.
Hopefully.
Is the, uh, say you say it's going to be, uh, an improvement over the old one, all, all new refrigerators and freezers would be an improvement.
Yes.
Are you actually going to make it the highest energy efficiency? I, I suggest you contact Mass Save and, and get the rebates that would be available if you do.
Um, so I have, uh, received, uh, rebates for replacing, um, our air conditioning and HVAC with, uh, with a heat pump. Um, I don't believe this qualifies, but it's a really interesting question and I'm shocked that I haven't looked into that yet. But the, um, the equipment that we're getting has to be very, you know, uh, of the highest quality and if, you know, because, um, it's at a very low temperature, especially, you know, the freezer especially. Um, but I will, uh, absolutely look into, um, you know, making sure that none of the options have changed with regards to efficiency and equipment, uh, since, um, this was initiated over a year ago.
Okay.
Um, and it's a great point, I appreciate that.
And are you shutting them off in the winter or are they running?
Uh, we're open year round.
Okay.
Um, we're, you know, we have a, a year-round wholesale business for the ice, Chatham Ice Cream Bars. Um, and we're, we're delighted to be open year round and also, um, serving coffee because Chatham has a, a, is a coffee desert in the winter, so we're glad to provide that service as well. Now, it'll be running year round. It is, um, it is quieter than the, uh, the prior equipment. Certainly more energy efficient, 20 years, you know, 23 years does a lot. Um, quieter, more efficient. It also pulls energy from the grid in a cleaner way. Um, and we, we all know that that's, anything to help out the grid in Chatham is positive.
My only other comment is I, I'm not sure where you pulled that picture of that, of the down, the lamps, the lighting you're going to use, but, uh, it probably behooves you to also look at that in terms of new, new technology, make sure it's LED and it probably doesn't have to look as ancient as this, it could be a little bit more modern.
Um, point, point taken, point taken.
Okay.
Thank you.
Charlene?
Um, just a clarification, you said a six-foot fence, your plan says an eight-foot fence.
Yes, it does. And I apologize for not updating that. That was reviewed with both the.
Because eight feet's too tall.
Yes, yeah. Six feet is, is the tallest. So it will be six feet tall. And the actual plans state, will state that as well.
And HBDC has already approved six feet, so you can't go eight feet.
Correct, correct, yes.
And this is a selfish question on my part. Do you have any non-dairy alternative for those of us who cannot have dairy?
We now have, you can go tonight to Buffy's and get a dairy-free Almond Joy ice cream.
Oh, okay.
And one of our ice cream bars is also dairy and gluten-free.
Oh, that sounds great.
Glad to be of service.
Like I said, it was selfish on my part. It's hard to find that.
Yes, we were delighted to meet all of the requirements of our friends that have allergen resistance or limitations.
Dietary constraints.
Yes, dietary constraints, thank you.
And in that note, I want to ask about your solutions to our coffee desert.
Oh, so very quickly, without taking too much of.
Yes.
We had people coming in in my first summer. Where can, where can we get coffee? In November of '22, I bought a, an espresso machine. We sold 5,500 coffees last year.
So wonderful dark roast coffee.
It's, it's Cape, it's Cape Cod coffee, beans. We do as much locally as we can. Delighted to be their partners, and I suggest coming in for an affogato, which is a couple scoops, scoops of ice cream with an espresso pour over. Thank you, friend, I'll leave me.
Thank you. So Frank, do you have questions or comments?
Just, just, not, not anything major, but.
All right.
The refrigeration unit is inside, it's coming outside?
Yes. We, there was a five-by-five walk-in refrigerator on the inside. There was a five-by-five walk-in freezer on the inside. Not only was it inefficient and the equipment old and creaky to say the least, the space was inadequate, especially given the, you know, the economic changes that have happened from 20, from 2001 till now requires that.
Let me, let me break in if I could. The, the question that I had was noise because it's now outside. And although it's quieter, it's still going to make some noise. How much noise will it make?
So the, the, the compressors for the prior units were outside.
Okay.
So the platform, there's a little platform in between the two buildings that is being utilized for the new equipment as well. And that doesn't, replacing equipment doesn't require any zoning or any other approvals. And as it, as it turns out, the, the compressor for the freezer was replaced already last year because the, the prior one broke down. So the new equipment has been running. I asked my neighbor on that side, Tail of the Cod, to come over and take a look at it and make sure that I've been keeping my neighbors as up to date as I can. And I think we both agreed that it was running more quietly than the, the prior unit.
And then secondly, on the, on the lighting. Again, the picture is shown here is, is not downward facing. I presume you can pivot, pivot those so it will be downward facing?
Yeah. We will, we will absolutely get LED, you know, lights that are energy efficient. They will be on a swivel. Our main objective, and we're going to have them high enough because there are some shrubs back there that are about eight feet high. And so the, the actual lights have to be higher than that, which will allow us to point them more downward. Because the areas that they have to cover are the, there's another, there's, I think there's another picture that has numbers on there. But if you can see at the rear of the, of the property, see if we can find that quickly. Yeah, right. One of those pictures has a one and a two on it, at least it does in my deck.
Yeah, I, I think I've seen it. It was, it was on the corners.
Correct. So the staff at night, as you can imagine, is, is bringing trash from the building out to the dumpster, which is on the private way. It is not lit. So this, one of the improvements will be making it safer for staff. We have a friend that lives back there, you know, big raccoon. I don't know if I've ever seen a raccoon that big before. So this will make it a safer journey back to the dumpster. And secondly, again, we have, we have, the public uses this to, as a, as a cut through. So at nighttime, whether there's, there's seating back there, existing picnic tables or, or walking through, it'll make it much, it'll make it much more well-lit than it has been. And, and those lights being very high will be very careful at making sure they're pointing down and not towards another property.
Right. These are suggestions, so it's not going to make a condition or suggest it be a condition. But how bright are the lights going to be?
It's a good question. If you have suggestions or a standard that I should follow.
Well, typically nowadays, we go with lumens, not watts, because it's a better measure.
Yeah.
A hundred watts would be 1,600 lumens. So I, I don't know how, how many, assume it was an incandescent bulb. How, how, how many watts would you anticipate needing?
Honestly, it's not a question I can answer right now. But again, I think what, what we'll do and I, and, you know, I, me a culpa, I did not take a lot of time to choose the picture of the light. But, but what I envisioned, because we do have some lighting there now, and it has the, you know, the projection that comes out and it makes it more of a directed light. So we will have lighting that has the, the ability to turn it more into a, a lighting that lights up a more specific defined area.
My, my, my only suggestion is that we have to be sensitive to the fact that because your light is high, it, it will, in fact, probably go outside of the boundaries of your property. And it ought to be lit clearly for security reasons. But balance that against not putting out a too bright a light. And also in terms of color, you know, there, there's light that is kind of incandescent, which is perhaps, oh, 7, 27 Kelvin. That would be the normal way to look at it.
Okay.
An incandescent light is around 27. But a bright objectionable fluorescent light is going to be around 4,000.
Right.
So you want as low a Kelvin temperature as you can to, okay.
Yep, I appreciate that.
Those are just my suggestions.
Yep, I appreciate that.
I would actually suggest that you get, that you look at smaller lights that are spots, not floods, and that you set them out so that they cover the path that you want and just the path. You won't necessarily have to put them at eight feet because of the, you know, that, that, they're just little components and they're cheap and they, they'll run, you just run a line out there and you put it on a motion and photo-sensitive controller. So it's only on when somebody's actually wants to walk out there.
We will have, we will have motion.
Of course, the raccoon is going to be one of those people.
Well, they have, obviously, they have the lights where you can set it such that it's not that sensitive, that it comes on when a, when a, however many 25-pound raccoon. But we will have motion sensors. And one other thing, we have the electric running along the fence. One of the things we had considered, which I'm absolutely willing to reconsider, is lighting that comes in from the top of the fence post. And that would be, I think, create a better ambient situation perhaps than overly bright lights that are higher up. So I appreciate all, all these ideas.
Good. Is that it? Bob Dupus?
I just have a couple of questions. You answered one. You have, your dumpster is in the back on Courtway. Could you point out where it is?
You can see it says trash right there. There was a cement pad that was poured a number of years back, prior to my ownership, that is utilized by both the Tail of the Cod and.
So is that more on the upside of the picture we're looking at?
If you can see in the upper left-hand corner, I'll go point, I'll go point to it. I'm conscious of people on the, so I won't say anything, but.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So as, Art, as a point on parking, I think that he has two parking places there. So if we're going to, if we're going to say we're going to relieve a couple of them, I would say that we, we, if there was eight necessary, that we could relieve six of them. That's for later. I, I have an issue with, as I think Bob did, or maybe, anyway, about when you're open, that some young person can get into your freezer, okay? And I, I think that you should have some kind of alarm on it. That, of course, a little kid, I don't think he can open it. But at least some, a, a younger person open it, maybe doesn't have the strength to push it, that it could have a red, some on the inside that either sets the sound off in the store or, or a light flashing light in the store just to be safe. Because that's the, one of the number one things is people suffocating in a freezer. And I, I approve the freezer and where it is and everything when you're trying to do. I just, being outside, being in a busy summer with, with all the people walking back and forth and back and forth, it would be easy for a young kid accidentally to stumble into that and maybe not have the pressure to open it. So an alarm maybe might help.
I can look into the.
And I would hope that before you close it up, you do a thorough check of it.
That might be too late.
Yes.
What about a camera?
What is it?
A camera inside the freezer so that you can monitor.
I, I think it would frost over, that's the problem.
That's true.
And someone would have to watch the camera all the time. We are, like, as I mentioned, we are going to have locks on the external entry.
It's not, it's not when it's locked that it's, that we worry about. It's when, you're, you're going to be busy and people are going to run back to grab some, grab some ice cream and, and walk back. So during that time, they're not going to open, they're not going to open it with, through a lock. They're going to open the, it's going to be open there, going to open it, close it.
So I'm saying that one of the things that we could do with the lock is keep the lock on the, on the hand, on the, you know, through it, not, not locked. And that would prevent.
That would help, that definitely, definitely.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely something that we could do. And that would just be our processes to take the lock off, go in, come out, put the lock, you know, back through the, the hole.
Listen, I agree, even the snap.
Do they, do we make them with a keypad? Because that would solve all your problems.
That would.
Yeah, I don't know if I've, I don't know if I've ever seen that.
I just noticed that it's one of the number one things for young people to get into and, and get stuck.
And we will absolutely make it a part of, obviously, our process to check it every night when we leave.
So anyway, so I, I think, I think you're doing a good job. Everybody I've talked to likes it. I knew the former owners. They, they had a lot of fun there.
David stopped by a couple of days ago. It was nice to see him.
Now, do you give him free ice cream?
Oh, he has carte blanche. As does Tara. I haven't seen Ian yet.
Okay.
So Bob, did you want to add a condition that we add a keypad or a, a lock for the freezer safety?
I don't, I don't, I don't think we can do that.
Yeah, okay.
All we're trying to do is make, make him just do the best he can, whether it be a snap lock or a keypad or something that they just can't yank the handle out and get in. Not, not that that's going to stop them, but at least it will help deter in it. And by, you know, by some slight chance, the door doesn't close that somebody got in there.
And when people are busy and running back and forth and getting ice cream, I mean, it's really easy that one of your employees just sort of closes the door and runs.
And it's not meaning to, it just happens to everybody.
But it's actually sort of a little bit open. And then somebody wanders in there and checking it at night, it's going to be too late, you know, if they get stuck in there.
So, but I, I'm more thing, the parking, I think we can, we can waive the way we.
Waive six spaces rather than eight. So it means, so on that gravel parking area, do you have at least two spaces that can be clearly defined?
So I don't think we do. If, not on my property.
Okay, that's the issue.
The way that that line runs, and if, if any of you are over there, we still have it staked off. That corner where the trash is, from that corner over to the bushes on the, on the bottom side, yeah, you can see it in the, right there, pretty well. Where it says gravel parking area, I don't know off the top of my head what the dimensions are of a parking spot.
This is only 10 feet at the widest.
But I have, I have looked at it. And I, I think we have the width, but not the depth, not the, the length.
So we can't really define parking spaces there. That was my sense of it. So I think we're going to have to waive the eight spaces if we waive.
Well, I think that we should not take action on it, just leave it the way it is.
Okay.
That would be the easiest thing, then it's, there's no, leave it the way it's been.
It is pre-existing non-conforming.
Correct.
It is. But it's coming before the board and we're reviewing it. And in my opinion, the waiver should have been granted 20 years ago. So I do think the board needs.
Does it make you happy?
Yes, it would make me happy.
I move, I move, we waive the eight, eight parking places.
It's not, yeah. It's not included. The waiver was not granted officially before. So they probably made that decision before, but I think since it is coming before us now, it would be better to consider it. And I would recommend granting the waiver since it's been working for such a long time somehow or other.
Do you want a vote on the waiver aside from, because it's not really a condition. It's a waiver, not a condition.
It's true. And we usually do vote on waivers separately.
So I move that the board authorize a waiver of eight parking spaces.
I'll second it.
Thank you so much. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Worchafter.
Bob Worchafter, approve.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
Frank Scherer.
Frank Scherer, approve.
Bob Dupus.
Bob Dupus, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I approve. So the board approves the waiver of the eight parking spaces. So now we want to consider the approval of the amended site plan with our three standard conditions. Would someone like to make the motion?
I move that we approve the amended site plan with conditions for the proposal to expand the restaurant use to allow the installation of a ground-level deck and freezer unit based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the protective zoning bylaw with the conditions as outlined.
Okay, thank you. And a second to that motion?
I second.
Thank you. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Worchafter.
Bob Worchafter, approve.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
Frank Scherer.
Frank Scherer, approve.
Bob Dupus.
Bob Dupus, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I also approve. Thank you very much for coming before the board.
Have a great day.
Much time brings samples.
Yes.
All right. Great. So the next item on our agenda is our long-range planning initiatives. And again, we'll have a discussion and review of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. You have in your packets included the draft bylaw as it stands now with all of the revised language incorporated that we've had recently reviewed by Town Council. It still is shown in red on the draft. So we will begin our discussion with any outstanding points that the board would like to bring up. We also, I think in our last meeting, we also considered the use table, as well as we went through all the items in red. So we just, I'm hoping tonight that we can just reach an agreement on the final draft because we would like to move forward with the build-out analysis and the visuals and so on from this point forward. So Katie and Gloria, maybe I'll ask you first if there's any points from your side you'd like to bring up about the draft before the board?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. So we provided a revised draft. There are some additional, I believe the items in green on the screen were additional, either additions or deletions made by our Housing and Sustainability Director, Gloria McPherson, here tonight. One item I also wanted to point out, the board had asked regarding. One item I also wanted to point out, the board had asked regarding, in this bullet point here, the word comparable. You had requested us to look to other state laws or other areas to see what we could find. What we did find is the word comparable was used a lot, but we added that comparable in quality materials and finish, and finishes, so that the units.
Indistinguishable from.
Yes.
Comparable to an indistinguishable from.
Right, and indistinguishable from. So, so we did add additional.
Indistinguishable from, I think really helps, yes. Okay, great, great. And you know, the, the hard copy that I have, I don't think it shows the amendments in green.
Actually, now that, now that you're saying that, I, for some reason, yes, that didn't make it into the track changes. So we did have that, yeah, okay. We'll sup, we'll supply the board with an additional copy of that.
Okay, so maybe what.
That was the only change, other change that happened.
The change in green was the only other change besides compar, the addition of comparable and indistinguishable from. Do you want to review what was changed, since I think in the hard copies that we have do not include that?
Do you want to go through your changes?
You deleted that one statement, right?
Looks like there's some additional that is not.
Yeah, I, I can't tell if it's a deletion or if it's an addition.
Well, there's been a deletion and then an addition.
Deletion will have the strike-through.
Okay.
But we don't have that in our copy.
We don't have it in our, our hard copies do not reflect what's on the screen. Oh, and it doesn't have the notes either? Nope.
No.
Nope.
Oh, then I don't know what to, I don't know.
So if you could review all of that for us, because it's not in our hard copies.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just gonna go over my copy. I don't even remember. I think I made these changes like the day after the meeting or something, trying to get it out of the way. Okay, so page one, no changes. Page two, under section four procedure, we had wanted to specify that it was the zoning bylaw and not quote-unquote "this" bylaw, which was the West Chatham Neighborhood Center.
Yes, I remember that, yes, good.
Is that there? Oh my God, I can't even see. Contrast isn't great. Okay. Page three, under definitions, we had cha, I don't even know if these are old or new changes.
These are old changes.
Okay, the deed restricted, okay. So what cha, what changes am I doing? Just the.
It, it was that page that, with the green on it.
Yeah.
Well, but it's.
The, the dense, really, it's the density.
So I have, I have other changes with notes here. So let me go to, okay. So let's go to page four at the bottom, where it talks about year-round rental units.
Yes.
There were some, oh, so it does have my comment there. I checked the Board of Health definition, I checked the state DOR definition, and they're not word-for-word the same, but they're basically comparable. So I felt pretty comfortable just leaving ours referencing the CMR, that's the, you know, the tax code for that. It's not in conflict with the Board of Health's regulations.
Okay.
Yeah. I think I asked, the Board of Health definition of a short-term rental is very similar to, and not in conflict with the language in the CMR cited here, I wouldn't change it. And then I guess, I asked, should there be some specific limitation on subletting? Note that everyone who rents has to use the unit as a primary residence a minimum six months plus one day. There was that talk going back and forth about whether we should, you know, limit subletting. I don't know if anyone still has thoughts about that. I didn't come to any conclusion here.
I, I think you already do not allow subletting under, under the language, because it says, "Year-round rental units are housing units that are rented by the property owner." So it can't be a year-round rental unit if it's rented by a tenant to a subtenant.
Okay. Okay, okay. I'm happy with that, so I'll just take out that little, little note then.
Also Gloria, just before we get too far along, not to be an English major here, but once we've defined our terms, like affordable housing or the qualified households, I think the initial letter of qualif, of household ought to be capitalized. But then subsequent use of the term qualified household ought to again be capitalized, just for the syntax. Otherwise, if it's not capitalized, it means it's not part of that definition.
Okay.
Which raises the question of, well then what is it? So.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, we can.
That's just a general comment, just for syntax and the use of the defined terms later on.
Okay. We'll take a pass through and, and try to make sure that those kinds of things are consistent.
Okay. Any other, can we look through?
Well.
Yes, go ahead.
Staying on the qualified household, and it, it may be that, I've missed it, but there's a requirement that one household member occupy for 10 months. But there's no requirement if it's not a leased unit. It's only, that only applies to leased units. Is that the intention?
I don't think it only require, it doesn't, I don't think it, it applies only to leased units, I'm not sure.
Well, it doesn't, the only, there's only one sentence that deals with that, right? And it says, "At least one household member must occupy the dwelling unit for at least 10 months of each 12-month lease term to be a qualified household." So it doesn't seem to deal with the owner situation.
Individual or family who rent, or a set of individuals who jointly rent. It does talk about a lot of.
I think we did discuss.
Qualified households.
Yeah, I'm wondering.
And then the year-round ownership units is its own.
I think we discussed adding, or 12-year, or 12-month calendar year, so that included both.
I do have that here.
Yeah. We just don't have the.
Oh, it's not in the one I have.
So, so I'll, let me read out, let me read out loud what I have here. So qualified household. An individual or family who rent, or a set of unrelated individuals who jointly rent a year-round rental unit on a lease of at least 12 months, and who all occupy that unit as their principal residence, or who own or jointly own and occupy a year-round ownership unit as their principal residence. At least one household member must occupy the dwelling unit for at least 10 months of each 12-month lease term to be a qualified household.
Okay.
But we have to say 12-month lease term. Somehow we have to also address the ownership situation.
But it does, but it does say also, or who own or jointly own and occupy a year-round ownership unit as their principal residence.
Right, but what is the requirement for an owner to have a member of the household live in the house?
It's, it's the same. So everyone who lives there, it has.
Months out of every calendar year?
Out of every 12-month lease term.
But if they own it and they don't have a lease.
Oh, if they don't have a lease, okay. Or, or calendar year.
Well, we have to say for owner, we somehow have to specify for ownership.
You may want to rework.
Calendar year.
Okay.
And for lease, it's per lease term.
Per calendar year for ownership units.
Yeah.
Now I understand.
Yeah, we just, yeah, okay.
Got it.
Okay, and are there other, so all those ones in green?
In, in greener and blue. I, I apologize, Madam Chair, when, when I attached this, it would obviously attached the previous version for the packet, so I apologize, but.
I must say, Madam Chairman, that my eyes aren't good enough to read that.
Yes, okay.
So perhaps there could be another distribution somehow?
Yes, yeah, no, we should definitely do that.
I'll make updates again during this meeting, and then we'll distribute that. So before we get to the green, on page five at the bottom.
Thank you. Before we get to green, on page five at the bottom, I added, is it there? I added some language, plus a note, specifically that there has to be a description of how the value of the payment in lieu is calculated. This was previously proposed, I'm not sure why it was cut out. Like, we had a long conversation about this, about how we were gonna calculate the, you know, average cost of a unit in a development. And ultimately, I hope you guys remember, this was probably back like, maybe like October of last year, or September, or something like that. We decided that the average cost of a unit, and this is the language that was added, "The average cost of a unit in the development shall be determined based on the value or values provided in the building permit application applications." And that was something that we had actually vetted staff, planning staff, with J. Briggs, the building inspector, building commissioner, as a, you know, just to make sure that it was a reasonable way to estimate it. I, I don't, I don't know why it got dropped out, but I think it's really important if you're gonna talk about an average cost of a unit, that you have some sort of metric for determining that average cost. And I just went back to what we had talked about previously.
So, so what does the green state in that last line on page five?
So that's not page five that's on the screen?
Oh, it's not?
No. I think we do need to go systematically through everything that's green on the screen, yeah.
I'm going through all my changes. Some are green, some are blue, well, all of, all of my changes on my document are blue.
Okay, what, so.
Yes. If you don't mind, I'm gonna go make some copies, I'm gonna go print for everybody.
Oh, thank you so much. I think that would help. Thank you.
Do you want to take a break?
We could take a break.
Can we discuss the, what Warren said?
I think we should have Katie and Gloria both present for that discussion, so I think a better idea would be to take a break.
I move to take a break.
Second it.
All right. Should we do a roll call vote, or can we all vote aye?
Katie, draw your motion and just the chair.
Yes. So let's take, let's, Katie, do you need 10 minutes to make them? Okay. Let's take a five-minute break. So there'll be no discussions of any business, planning board business during the break.